Welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Charter Township of Washington Board of Trustees. Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. If you'll all stand and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask for roll call from our clerk. Brown?
Reinhold?
Here.
Stevenson?
Here.
Chaplin?
Here.
Pravidi?
Here.
Brown, here. Nicely?
Here.
Mylum?
Here.
Okay, I'll present an account report. You see before you the agenda. We're, usually I say if there's any additions, deletions, or motions, we're adding, the Treasury's adding 10.5 for lighting. Oh, okay, then I didn't put the latest. And 10.6, I just passed this out to the board. We had a dump truck today break down in our DPW. I'll explain it more, but Rich just brought this to me around four o'clock, so I'd like to put this on for 10.6 for the approval of Tri-County International Trucking Envoy.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 10.6.
Motion by Brown, supported by Stevenson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Sorry, is my mic working? I feel like it's low.
A little low. Hello? Testing.
Okay. I just, it does sound slow. I don't think mine is either.
Testing.
Okay. Okay. No, maybe I'm just not hearing the echo in the room. Next, you're being asked to approve the consent agenda. You are being asked to approve the accounts payable of June 12th, 2025. Approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of June 4th, 2025. Accept the Building Department Monthly Report of May 2025. Accept the Robinson Capital Monthly Report of May 2025. Accept the Fire Department Monthly Report of May 2025.
There we go. Oh, it's working.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Pravidi, seconded by Chaplin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. There's no moved agenda items. Next is comments from the audience on any of the agenda items. If anyone would like to address the board on any of 10.9.1, 10.1, 10.2 through 10.6, you can address the board going once, going twice. Okay, thank you. Next is legal counsel.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Next is unfinished business to approve the Metro Act Permit Application Request. And I guess that's back to legal. If you want to explain it, or?
Well, I put a detailed letter. I'll take any questions, but the application was the most complete that I've seen in the 10 years I've been reviewing them. They did an outstanding job. I talked to Rich, he talked to Mike. DPW has no issues with it. Your engineer has no issue with it. I would recommend approval.
I make a motion to approve the Metro Act Permit Application Request.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Brown, seconded by Mylum. No questions from the board? Otherwise, roll call.
Brown, yes. Mylum?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Go on to new business. The next four items are from Spalding to Decker. We have Taylor here. Reynolds from there. The first one is to approve the request of the 26 Mile Road Pathway Gaps Proposal. So, I don't know if you want to.
Sure.
Let me explain.
The focus of this project is extending a pedestrian route or completing a pedestrian route from M53 East to the township line on the north side of 26 Mile Road. There are several scattered gaps there, and Spalding to Decker has already started the easement acquisition process. And property owners are asking for further details as to the specific design of those segments. So what you have before you today is the master plan pathway segments 15, 16, 17, 18, and 25, and the proposed design services fee of $105,000.
Well, this complete the gap between what's on the map already?
Yeah, so all those items in red would connect.
Yes. What is shown in the exhibitor are the missing pieces between M53 and the township border.
So for the rest of the board to understand, we're trying to go basically from Hayes all the way to Stony Creek. So it'll be a nice, long pathway to, you could walk or ride your bike.
Yep. Pedestrian and non-motorized access.
This will be part of our capital project.
And the construction of this is, would be anticipated in 2027 because there is easement acquisition involved.
And you already have it in our budget supervisor, don't you?
Yeah, we do, but we're pushing it up to '27, just to give time with easement acquisitions, the hard part.
Yes.
Motion to award Spalding to Decker contract for the amount $105,000 for engineering and surveying services for pathway segments 15, 16, 17, 18, and 25 on the north side of 26 Mile Road between Jewel and Hayes.
Support.
Okay, that's a motion by Chaplin, supported by Stevenson. Any questions? Otherwise, roll call.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Mylum?
Yes.
Brown? Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Next is to approve the recommendation to award the Year Three Pathway Gaps Bid. So we had the bids go out. Taylor will explain it now. This is for 29 Mile Road?
Yes, this is 29 Mile Road east of Mound, both north and south sides, east to Campground. Several gaps, including a crosswalk at Gilcher Park. And we received two bids. Italia Construction has done previous projects very successfully in the township, and they are listed as low bidder. So this is a recommendation of award to Italia for these, for this construction season.
Do you know, ma'am, if there's going to be lights where people can cross since little kids go back and forth? That's.
Yeah, what we have at the crosswalk is a push-button activated rectangular rapid flashing beacons and advanced warning signs.
So this has been talked about by the Sidewalk Committee, I want to say, for at least three or four years. We're finally getting close to it, especially with the park there. We have a lot of people crossing the street there, so it'll make 29 Mile a lot more safer, especially with the crosswalk going there as well.
That's great.
Construction times start and finish, do you think?
They will be up to the contractor's schedule, but we are prepared for them to start the end of July and then finish before the school year.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation for the award of a three-year pathway gaps bid to Italia Construction in the amount of $948,696.56 for construction.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Brown.
Can you repeat the number? Because I got 949, 541, 56 in the letter dated June 11th.
The bid tab had a correction on it, and the correct amount is exactly as read by Clark Brown. 948, 696, 56.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Brown, supported by Chaplin. No other questions? Roll call.
Brown, yes. Chaplin?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Mylum?
Yes.
Reinhold?
Yes.
Okay, next is 10.3. With the Year Three Pathways comes engineering. Next is the engineering proposal by Spalding.
Correct. This is construction services associated with that construction contract, including survey staking, contract administration, engineering assistance, and construction inspection totaling $122,346.
Motion to approve. You can't have one without the other.
Oh, you could.
Okay, motion to approve the request for the Year Three Pathway Construction Engineering Proposal. It doesn't say the amount here, but the amount of $122,346.
Yep. Support. Okay. So that's a motion by Mylum, supported by Stevenson. Any questions? Otherwise, roll call.
Mylum?
Yes.
Stevenson? Reinhold?
Yes.
Nicely?
Yes.
Chaplin?
Yes.
Pravidi?
Yes.
Brown? Yes.
Motion passed. Next is approve the request of an easement document creations by Spalding to Decker. I don't know if it's been three or four years. We've had Spalding now do our easement. That's helped speed up the easement process because our DPW was bogged down with it. So it's been successful.
Yeah, this is specific to the easement exhibits themselves rather than the acquisition process. And this last came before the board in November of '21. And at that time, had a per-property fee of $950. And this proposal in front of you increases that per-property fee to $1,100.
So what you're saying, it was in 2021, it was $950, now we're up to $1,100?
Correct.
The amortizer now, it's a little less than 3% a year.
I'm still not happy with it. It doesn't take any more or less time.
The going rate is a lot higher than 1,100, though, I know that. I know things are going up.
Correct. This is less expensive than other consultants in the township.
So, refresh me on this easement process. Once they prepare these documents, what is the, what is the process then to finalize the easement?
Sure. So what's in front of you today is simply the easement exhibit that goes along with the agreement to get recorded with the property. Separate from that, we are providing easement acquisition services to the township only for pathway easements. And that involves coming up with a market study, working with the township assessor's records to come up with a market study and a fair market value for initial offers for residential properties, asking commercial properties to donate their easements. And then we work through the internal sidewalk committee for anybody who pushes back and provides a secondary offer that we bring back to the township rather than us just moving blindly forward. There are some residents who have requested some plantings other than additional funds. And then there are property owners who have gone ahead and donated the easements as well. So once those are in place, they come through the township for payment, if there is one, and for sending to the county for recording.
So do we provide you with the list of people we need you to approach? Is that how that works? Or do you go and figure that out?
A great example is the 26 Mile Road Pathway that was just approved.
Like 15, 16?
If the right-of-way has not been dedicated, instead of pushing properties to dedicate right-of-way to the Department of Roads, which is a lot bigger task, we're chasing usually a 12-foot wide easement or whatever width is necessary to grade onto that property.
Does the sidewalk committee know how many of these we're going to need upcoming? I mean, are there a lot hanging out there, or is it?
Yeah, there's.
Yeah? Okay. I wasn't, I have no idea. Do we have, do we have three, or do we have 400?
No, there's not.
What's your definition of a lot?
400?
Okay. Well, we only have 400.
I do believe in the past three years, we've been a total of 36.
36.
Oh, three years. Okay. Because this is a very ambiguous.
No, 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 no. That's per year, that's total, right?
Right. That is total, over the last three years, we've been a total of 36.
So one a month?
That's the average.
Okay.
36.
Yeah, we're not in the.
It's not, it's not that.
You're comfortable?
It's 12 a year.
If Charles is comfortable, I'm comfortable.
See, we're a new board, we don't know that, so. Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
That was a really good question.
Just to give a little back history, the four years before, it was Rich would go knock the door, and nobody's there. Then we sent another guy and knocked the door, and it was just a number getting done. It's very time consuming.
There's a safety issue there, too, so I'm comfortable.
We did have a company, this was before my time, that was actually from the west side of the state, and the residents took offense to it because why is this person from Grand Rapids knocking on my door?
I can see that.
I mean.
Yeah, Spalding was more professional doing it.
So, is a township, do we try to reach out first before we send it over there? Or is this like take it off our shoulders and they just handle it?
We handle the initial communication. It is a letter that lists one of our engineers as well as Richard Mino's contact information here at the township.
So, just last question, I promise. So when you send that initial letter out, is that $1,100 right then and there, or?
The $1,100 is the exhibit that, the sketch of the easement that our surveyors create that gets recorded.
Okay, very good.
Feel free to keep going.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the proposal for the easement documents 2025 update.
Second.
We got a motion by Mylum, seconded by Reinhold. Any other questions?
Do we need a dollar more than here, or no?
It's just 1,100 per as many as we can.
Okay. All right, so because.
A new fee.
Okay. All right. So because it probably is important, of course, we're going to go from $950 to $1,100. So I should say approve per property $1,100 fee.
Sounds reasonable.
Support.
Charles already spoke.
Charles re-approved. Okay, so we have Mylum, supported by Reinhold. Any other questions? Otherwise, roll call.
Mylum.
Yes.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Nicely.
Yes.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Pervidi.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Motion passed. I don't know if you're going to stay for the whole meeting. I'll announce it now. I was saving this for elected officials update, but I want to thank Spalding. They, they helped get us a SEMCO grant for $706,000. This will be a sidewalk. You can tell me the exact, but it starts at Wingate Sub all the way to the Junior High on 32 Mile. So this will be a new segment along 32 Mile, and we're hoping for next year.
Yes, we are targeting 2026 for that improvement.
Yeah, so that's a huge chunk of money to help us with the sidewalk gap program.
Supervisor Pervidi, could you repeat the dollar amount again?
I don't have the exact. It's 706,000, but there's some.
So over 700,000.
Correct.
Where's that coming from?
Thank you so much.
Well, it's called SEMCO. It's the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. But they're a, they're a large group of seven counties.
You helped us secure that?
Yes, we handled the application. Kayla Malden, our planner.
Yeah, our planner.
Is that working with our team?
Correct.
Kayla and Taylor worked on it.
That $1,100 bill just went down a lot easier.
Maybe I should have said that first.
That would have helped a little.
Kayla was out there where she wants it.
That's right. That's right. She's motivated.
I mean, I get worried. I mean, Taylor knows, I'm trying to get 26 Mile. It'd be a huge pathway, and I'd love to get 32 Mile, especially to connect to the village. We have the, the old high school, which is now middle school. So you got a lot more kids walking than, before it was more high school traffic. So that area is a lot more important. That goes to Washington.
Talk about spending all that money in Washington.
Thank you.
No, it's about safety. Anyway, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is 10.5 about the new lighting.
Yes, so each year, we got to come to the board and ask for the street lighting assessments to be put on the tax roll. So what I'm asking for, if the board approves, is the street lighting assessments to be placed on the summer 2025 tax rolls that will be mailed or dropped, that will be mailed, mailed dropped on Monday, June 30. This is a pass-through collection, so we collect it and then we send it on to DTE. Because there's two of them, I'd like to do two motions on this if I could. The first one is going to be for Willow Ridge. There's 111 parcels at $151 each for a total of $16,761. So I'd like to make a motion to place Willow Ridge, 111 parcels on the summer 2025 tax roll.
Support.
Who got it?
Okay, motion by Nicely, supported by Stevenson.
It's closer. She heard.
Any questions? Otherwise, roll call.
I'm done. I'm sorry, one second.
Nicely and Stevenson.
Got it, okay. Nicely.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Mylum.
Yes.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Pervidi.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
The second one is to approve the Willow Ridge Farms parcels, 75, 75 parcels at $55
each for a total of $4,125 to be placed on the summer 2025 tax roll, July 1, 2025.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Nicely, supported by Brown. No questions? Roll call.
Nicely.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Pervidi.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Mylum.
Yes.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Motion passed.
There's no other stuff? No, the other ones come in the winter time.
Oh, okay, that's, that was, this is true.
I have a 15-minute presentation for the board.
Next is 10.6, the added item. So this afternoon, Rich Marino, he's not here tonight. He would have explained that I told him not to come because tonight's his birthday. So I didn't want to spoil his birthday. If he is watching, he said he would watch. So happy birthday, Rich.
Happy birthday.
But the bad news is the dump truck that the township has broke down. This is the dealer that we deal with. The cost is $22,487. Again, it's cheaper to repair it and to scrap it and get a new one. The bad news is, in the meantime, we're renting, he has to rent the dump truck. Normally, they go for about $7,500 a week to rent. He found a, they gave us a deal, I look around, $3,500. I'm supposed to get the exact amount in the morning, but so it's going to take two to three weeks at least to fix this truck. So the sooner we can approve this, I didn't want to do this as an emergency spend. Since we had a meeting tonight, I thought I'd bring it before the board now to talk about it. But it's just one of those things that happen.
You own equipment, you got to keep it maintained.
Yeah, I'm saying we don't have a spare backup, so.
I assume the truck otherwise is in good condition.
Yeah, I mean, the engine is good. It's the diesel truck. You know, they last forever. It's just.
Sam, are these numbers correct? It has 13,000 miles on it?
Yeah, all, most of our cars don't have a ton of mileage because we just drive in the township.
That's great.
We're not really driving around a lot.
It's been in service 10 years.
It's 10 years.
It's been amazing.
I'll make a motion that we approve the repair to the dump truck for $22,487.28 to Tri-County International Trucks.
Second.
Okay, so that's a motion by Stevenson, supported by Reinhold. If any other questions? Otherwise, roll call.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Mylum.
Yes.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Pervidi.
Yes.
Nicely.
One comment. Even though it has 13,000 miles on it, what everybody's got to be aware is the engine hours. If you buy a police car and it only has 1,000 miles on it, and it has five, 600 engine hours idle time, that's the amount of time that the engine sat idle, not running. So it's important to remember that even though this has 13,000 miles on it, it's been idling for almost over 1,000 miles, excuse me, for 1,000 hours. So the engine is still running at that point. But my vote would be yes, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Even though it's got 13,000, the idle hours are about 1,200.
Thank you.
Over 10 years is not bad.
No.
Oh, no, no.
I know, just saying.
Looks like a man reading something wrong.
That's interesting. That's a good point.
Nope.
Good point. Okay. So Nicely.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion approved. So you'll get this in the morning or probably Friday, not the ghost. Yeah, or tomorrow. I don't know. Comments from the audience on basically anything, non-agenda or agenda items? Feel free to come to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name and address. You can talk about anything you'd like. Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, thank you. Elected officials update, community announcements. Not sure if the whole board knows, about four years ago, I tried starting, it was called Adopt a Spot. I called it. I was trying to beautify each of the intersections where our sign is, which part of that will be handled now with our wayfinding and new signage coming, hopefully beginning the summer. But in that process, Sam Marino of Marino's Landscape volunteered to do our parking lot. So he's been doing the fall and spring cleanup, the plantings, the trees. And the board accepted at the time. And he's been doing it now for, I want to say, four years or not five now. And it's not a cheap thing. It's always fresh mulch and new plantings. This year, he actually went above and beyond what he even promised. He actually ripped out everything. He's planted new fresh things. He's new flowers, new bushes, and new perennials, annuals. I don't know the difference, but he's planted them. I'm sorry. In the meantime, he called me, when the parking lot was built, it's not real brick. I don't know what they call that, if it's a faux brick or what. And they painted it a maroon-red color. It didn't really look good. Cracks were starting to show. He called me up, I don't know if it was a Tuesday or Wednesday last week. He's like, I have someone that'll paint it and freshen it up and will make it look nice and this and that. And I'm like, yeah, that's great. And before I could tell anyone, the guy was already out there and he painted, made it nice. It looks great. The name of the company is called Three Feathers Paintings. I want to thank them publicly. We'll do it. And of course, Marino's. Not only did they paint it all fresh, we took the parking lot signs down because now they kind of look bad against it. So my Cozak's actually looking into seeing like to do a nice lettering to give it a more modern look. We went with more like a beige-y white. That's a little bit more modern look. They even painted the poles with the lighting. You have to go there to, you don't realize how much they did in there until you drive in there to look. But he's still telling me there's more to come. They're going to dress it up more. So I just want to let the board know there was no cost to the township, obviously. And we want to thank both companies for doing this.
I was wondering whether I was going crazy.
I mean, he really, he really went gangbusters in 24 hours with that. It was like, but it really freshened up the look of it.
It's much nicer there.
Yeah. It's our municipal park.
It's not on this property. It's on.
No, no, I'm sorry. It's across the street.
South of Brown Iron.
Yeah, by Garland Street, south of Brown Iron.
By Brown Iron. That parking lot's owned by the city.
Yeah, that's owned by the township, yeah.
That's looking good. You know, I was driving by the memorial park, too. The roses outgrown are really looking nice. You know, it's, it's really.
Does he do that?
Hmm?
Does he, does Marino, no?
No, no.
Is somebody else doing that?
I don't know who's doing that, but it looks fantastic over there, too.
Ron White.
That's Ron White, our love.
Ron White does that.
All right.
I announced the sidewalk grant that we did receive, which I was excited. The 26 Mile Grant that we received, that was also through SEMCO about a year and a half ago. That's, the bridge is being built right now. It's a 12-foot wide pedestrian bridge over the Y H drain on 26 Mile between Beacons Field and M-53. The, the construction of the sidewalks are all in place, but it's barricaded now for the bridge. So they're telling me it's still November. That's, it's more fabrication than we thought. I'd rather say the date they're telling me November than promise earlier. 32 Mile and Mound, the lights are finally working. The bad news is the other night, there was an accident there. So please be cognizant of the, the new light there. Our command officer's telling me people are not used to the traffic light there. So they, they're patrolling the area a little bit more. The county's telling me they'll be putting some more flashers around the Cusack Lake there. So I'm hoping that'll help, too. But the poles were put in, then the light came in, I don't know, about a month or six weeks ago. And then they were blinking red for a while. Now they're finally working correctly as a traditional green, yellow, red light there. Powell Road is, that is, the township already did our portion of it. We're using ARPA funds for that. I think we voted on that about a year and a half ago. The county's putting that out to bid this week, and it's slated to be paved in August. And that's basically from 30 and a half mile to 32 mile. So that should, they're telling me hopefully by the end of August, that'll be paved. I'm hoping before school starts, it'll be finished. Our next meeting, I know it was written for July 2, but I thought we talked a while back to cancel that meeting. I don't know. Traditionally, we only have one in July. Even this meeting, I only really had sidewalks.
We don't have anything for the agenda.
Yeah, I'm saying I can always call a meeting if we need it, if we have something. Otherwise, July 6, July 16 is a very important meeting. We have a couple big items for that meeting. But I think, I think you'll be at the July 16 meeting.
No, you don't.
Christine's supposed to be at that one.
She feels like there's an illness coming up.
Do we do fireworks or anything here?
Stony Creek does it. It's usually the Friday before.
The 27.
Yeah, it's usually, oh, okay, it's June 27.
Yes.
June 27 in Stony Creek.
It's at Stony Creek. Yeah, Stony Creek Metro Park will be having fireworks on June 27 at sundusk or dusk.
It starts about 10 o'clock, but you got to get there early because it's going to be, usually it's packed.
Yeah.
Or you come to my backyard.
If you can't get in, tell them you're taking pictures with my, and I'm just.
Just let your wife know.
I don't know. Do we have to make a motion or just if we have a thing?
I recommend making a motion.
Move to cancel the July 2 meeting.
Okay.
I support 10.
Okay, we'll make a motion. We'll cancel our July 2 as posted and continue with July 16, of course. That's by Chaplin, supported by Mylum. No questions? Roll call.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Mylum.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Nicely.
Yes.
Pervidi.
Yes.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. I just have one more, well, two. Tomorrow's Juneteenth. The office will be closed. Our online and overnight boxes open. We'll reopen on Friday. Obviously, fire and police are still working. Just awfully awful. I did make a cable commission, which was made up of me, Michelle, and John Chaplin. John Chaplin has decided not to continue on the commission. I'd like to open it up if someone, another trustee would like to serve. I don't know if anybody's has interest. Otherwise, I was going to nominate Dennis. Or.
For the unpaid committee member.
For the unpaid committee member. But I don't, I didn't talk to Dennis about it either. So I, it's open. I don't know if Charles has any interest or Mike. I don't know.
Mike, you in?
I got nothing else to do.
Since it was a board-voted item, I'd feel more comfortable if I could say, make a motion to approve Dennis as than to replace John on the cable commission.
So moved.
Supported by John Chaplin.
Yeah.
If no questions, roll call.
Pervidi.
Yes.
Chaplin.
Yes.
Sorry, Nicely.
Yes.
Stevenson.
All right.
Reinhold.
Yes.
Mylum.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
I do have one more. Taxes are going out on June 30. July 1 is the date they need to go out. Please be aware that we're going to be closed on Independence Day, which is Friday, July 4. And then we're going to be closed on September 1 for Labor Day. Taxes will be due on 14, which is a Saturday or Sunday. So please get them in as quickly as you can. There will be a newsletter attached to that, give you some suggestions and guidelines and the best ways to make the payments. But try to get them in as quickly as you can, even though we don't want to make the payments. They're going to, they're going to come anyway. So certainly helps everybody out. But July 1 is going out due September 14.
Okay. Also, on Monday, July 14, there's going to be a town hall meeting. I've been working with Supervisor Pervidi and with Kayla Malden of Spalding D Decker and other officials. We're going to address some of the M-53 safety issues. We have a multi, multi-speed freeway with various turnoffs, and there are some hazards that have come to light, light. And we've been working for a long time to try to find funding to address some of these. We've also worked with, I've contacted some of our legislators, and we've worked